Good evening, welcome to the Milford Select Board meeting of October 7, 2024 at 6:00 PM in Room 3 of Milford Town Hall. Our first agenda item is the signing of the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we sign the warrant for September 30th, 2024, and I second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. Next is the approval of the regular session minutes of September 30th, 2024.
Chairman, I make a motion we approve the minutes of the regular session, September 30th, 2024, and I second that as well.
And I would make that unanimous. And last is the approval of the executive session minutes of September 30th, 2024.
Chairman, I make a motion, could I stop one second, Mr. Chairman? Is that the one that I was...
You have to abstain.
Right. They abstained, so I will not make the motion. I make the motion for that to accept the minutes. Executive session of September 30th, 2024, Mr. Chair.
And I would second that and make that unanimous. Okay, next agenda item, we have public hearings, and we do have a public hearing tonight. We have the Portuguese Club as an amendment to a change of manager. Is anybody here from the Portuguese?
Yes, there.
Come on right up, ladies. Come on right up, ladies. If you could please, because you're on camera, you could state your names for the public.
Michelle Cruz.
Sandy Jantalos.
I'm sorry, can I get those?
Michelle Cruz.
Okay, and you are from the Portuguese Club, and you are looking, you have filed an application to amend your annual all-alcoholic club license for a change of manager and a change of officers at the Portuguese Club. The manager is going to be Michelle Cruz. Okay. We do have a department head review form, building commissioner, assembly use and occupancy building and restrooms are all accessible, town planner, okay, no change of actual use, treasurer, there are no liens, fire chief has no objections, our police chief has approved it, and the board of health has no violations. Would you like to say a few words, or you just here in case we have questions for you?
Yeah.
You don't even want to say hello?
They're all smiling.
I think they did it first.
If you meet her outside, you're leaving. Very nice. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the change, the amendment to the annual all-alcohol license for the Portuguese Club. Portuguese, the Instruto, what are you, Kilo?
James.
Okay, thank you very much. And, Mr. Chairman, this is also something that is approved by the ABCC. It's just a change of manager, who's going to operate the premises so that we're aware. And I appreciate the ladies coming this evening.
I second that, Mr. Chair. I also appreciate the applicants actually coming here as well. Everything in order from department heads, application all filled out properly, and I gladly second that motion.
And I would make that unanimous, and thank you very much for coming in, and wish you the best.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck to you, really.
Have a good night.
Thanks much.
Thank you.
Take care now.
Take care, ladies.
Okay, next agenda item is schedule appointments tonight. We do have two scheduled appointments. The first one is with our police chief and Amy Leoni on a Narcan initiative. Amy and Chief, if you want, come up to the front. You're both well experienced with the front row.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
So, we've been working, obviously everybody knows about the opioid abatement, and so we've been working a lot with the board of health, the fire chief, police chief, and Christmas Corner to really get out Narcan and increase the awareness of the opioid epidemic and the response and intervention. So, one of the things that we're going to be doing is you have a flyer there that we're going to be putting in all of the retailers and the restaurants in their bathrooms behind the stalls so that it increases, it'll be in three different languages as well. So, it increases kind of the awareness of what to do when overdosed, what are the signs and symptoms, where you can get Narcan, as well as the fentanyl strips and things like that. And then we also have coasters that we're going to be, we've been seeing a lot of cocaine and press spill pills with fentanyl in it, so looking at kind of increasing the awareness of where to get Narcan and where to get the fentanyl test strips over at Christmas Corner. So, we're going to be doing that, and then from there, we're going to be holding a lot of Narcan training. And so, I have a meeting with Milford TV to have myself trained, you know, like videotaped so that we can then have secure links so that people can get trained whenever they want to. And then we'll also hold live trainings as well if people want to do it. One of the other reasons for coming to the board today was to talk about getting the LOX boxes. So, those, we have AED machines, and so with the board of health, we were looking to get the LOX boxes, which are a box that has the Narcan in it, the breathing mask, how to use the Narcan. And if anybody wants to take it, they can take it, we can replenish it, we are unsubsidized, so we have Narcan supply at any point in time that we want from the state. But we wanted to put those wherever there's an AED machine in the town. So, we were looking, we have the support from the fire chief and obviously the police chief, so we were looking for your support as well to putting those up in the town.
Okay, Chief, would you like to make service?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, for me, this is, doesn't even need half a second or more, you know, talking about saving someone's life and putting that ability to save a life in everybody's hands because why not? You know, as you know, I've been, you know, in the paramedic business for over 30 years, and I can't see the downside to any of this, okay? When you do have a conversation with people about this, it's always positive because I'll guarantee you, anybody who lost a loved one to this affliction, right, wishes that somebody gave them some Narcan, some bystander. You know, I recently traveled to New York, and you know, I got on the train, I traveled, what did I have in my bag? Narcan. I had two doses of Narcan that I carry with me when I'm not at work, you know, just in case this happens. So, obviously, you know, I'm in full support of this, and so is everybody at the least part.
Tom?
I can't say any more than they've said, it's just, you know, if you have a heart attack, if you have that defibrillator, it's seconds and moments count. We talk four minutes, it's not four minutes, you're down, it's can I bring you back? And it's seconds and it's moments, and with Narcan, it's no different. And, you know, I, I guess I could stop and tear up. The number of people that the Milford Police and Fire Department have truly saved their lives, and along with Amy Leoni, has follow-up and working with them and making a difference. There were people that work with her now that were dead. They were dead not once, not twice, three, four, five, six times. Police and Fire revived them, and they moved on to a better life. And today, they're flourishing, they're doing fantastic, they have kids, and they went from working at Dunkin' Donuts to working for Amy Leoni to help other people. I just, this is as important as any other lifesaving tool. And you know, the bottom line comes down, they're going to accomplish it, they're going to make sure people in Milford, we've been ahead of the curve. I think, Chief, when you introduced that to me, the Narcan, we were fourth or fifth in the whole state.
Yeah, so, we were actually the first when I carried it as a paramedic.
Oh, as a paramedic, but to distribute it to every single cruiser.
Yeah, I was fourth in the state, third and fourth in the state, yeah.
You know, and trust me when I tell you, it makes a huge difference. And, you know, we can look and say, ah, that person has this addiction, that person has this, you know what? That person has life, they're alive now, we can work with them, and that's what she does every day. I don't know how you can't say no. I, I mean, before I make a motion, I'm just going to let you gentlemen talk, I, this is lifesaving.
Thank you. Yeah, Amy, you know, we already got our approval from the board of health and whatnot, and I mentioned to you before, it's been since 1971, 53 years, like I mentioned, President Nixon declared war on drugs, and that was over a half century ago. And really, what has changed, you know, like I mentioned too, more people are dying from opiate addiction than they are cancer today. More people are using opiates, are addicted to opiates than they are tobacco today. You know, so like I said, it's something that I think education and awareness is something that is really something that we got to look at. If there's not a vaccine for a disease such as this is, education and awareness is the next best thing. And like I say, to train individuals, you know, to how to use this, like Tom said, it's just as good as a defibrillator, you know, for someone with a heart problem. So, like I said, we're very, very much in favor of it, we're happy that you did come to the board of health too, as well as the select board, and there's nothing like knowledge and skills that we needed to respond to when someone's in a situation like this. They'll also see the different signs of someone that's in an overdose type of a condition. So, like I says, I definitely am in favor of this too, Mr. Chairman, and your select board member, Tom.
When I saw the packet, the first thing that I thought of is, the saying is that if we save one life, the whole program's worth it, just one. But then I saw that, you know, with the initiative to bring it into, you know, into the schools, and I said, having two former school committee members sitting in the board of selectmen, but a very well-seasoned police chief, it's a no-brainer. And people say to me all the time, well, you know, I never, I never had those issues when I was in the school, no, you didn't, no. And things change, and we hear that all the time now. Well, you know, things have changed, yeah, things have changed because life changes, and if we take the attitude, well, we're not going to change to take care of these issues that have come up, and shame on us. And this is, you know, the number of times that we've seen a defibrillator save the life of a young student, whether athlete or just in school, today is amazing. So, to take Narcan and put it in the same location, it makes perfect sense, you know, makes perfect sense. And again, I say thank you to the two of you for taking the initiative to do something like this, you know, because I go back to if we save just one life, it's well worth it. And I hope we save a whole, every single one, but, you know, and if you, you know, we all know, we all have experience with the emergency room at the hospital, and what goes in there on a daily basis, I should say, the people that go in there on a daily basis struggling, and Narcan got them there. Because if it wasn't for the Narcan, who knows if they would have made it there. And to Tom's point, and given the opportunity through help and education, most people will flourish and get back into society and lead a great life, you know, because of Narcan. So, can I have a motion, please?
Yes, and I'd be willing to suggest that more people will be saved with the Narcan than the defibrillator. And it's simply statistical based upon the health of the individual you're dealing with. And just to show you that, there's no question about it, and I think these professionals, as the chief just said, and here's someone that's been a paramedic for almost as long as I've been alive, but I'm older than them, but anyway.
I was going to say that, come on.
I know, I know it's pressing, it's pressing the numbers, I appreciate that. I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of Amy Leoni and the police chief to provide this vital service to assist people and make sure that they stay alive. And I gladly second that as well, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Amy, very nice to see you.
Again, Amy, as we always say, anything we can do, please.
And by the way, she is the key person at the courthouse now. She is. So, when it comes to references from the judges of how to help people, it's Christmas Corner, Amy Leoni, and Community Impact, and they're proving themselves beyond belief. I mean, it's, I am grateful for everything they do.
We are.
Thank you.
You saw from the very beginning.
Yeah, I most certainly did. Yeah, we held hands, said how we're going to do this.
Yep, yep.
And to give it some context, you know, we're here before the board, and I'm glad Amy's here, we're here, you know, we've been asked to go to the International Association Chiefs of Police to present on what we got going on here in the Family Services Union, you know, which is amazing, but, you know, we've run into some hard times, you know, financially with the state, the state's in a crunch, and that's an issue of, you know, with the finance committee. But you...
You should take it up here as well.
Yeah, well, we will. But the, to have, you know, put that in context, right, the opioid crisis across the country, okay? Think of this, across the country, the chiefs of police association from across the country, chiefs from all, some from out of country.
International.
International.
Yeah.
Okay?
I belong.
And they, Milford, because of what we have going on here, now, I can't lie, she's 99.99999%. I just, I'm a good friend here, okay?
He's the chief.
All right? Thank you. We're going to be presenting, it's the chief. So, you think we're doing something right?
Yep.
And I can sit here, we can talk about the numbers, driving the numbers down, right? Can sit here and talk about, you know, the lives that we've turned around, the help that we've given people, everything from helping people get smock services to literally today, having members of the Family Services Union at the hospital with me trying to help place somebody. And the finance committee wants to cut me? It doesn't want to support me?
You deal with the finance committee and you...
I'm just saying, the board needs to know that.
No, please feel free.
And the town needs to know, that's what I'll say.
Yeah, that's okay.
Deal with the finance committee as you should, and then please come back and have a conversation.
I see, yes.
But it's just, it's just amazing things that are going on here in town.
No, I just, I don't want to intervene in whatever the finance committee's dealing with, deliberating, let them...
I understand that, and I...
No, I appreciate you raising that, but...
Appreciate your position, but we're very passionate about it here.
I know you are.
As you should be.
Don't forget, the way you, the way you can, you know, conduct yourself too, and the way you can get things across, Tom Meeting has the final say.
No, I understand that, and we'll cross that bridge.
You know, if you look back, and that's what Amy said, you were there in the beginning, we kept statistics, we, we have been successful in Milford.
You should see them right now.
Because Amy, Amy and I started out, and we kept stats.
Since 2012.
We could show you every overdose, who it was, where it happened, what we believe they consumed, how we reacted.
How much Narcan?
Before Narcan, and then how much Narcan, did they go to the hospital, and where were they from?
Right.
And if you recall, now, we still have sitting all the neighboring towns. Years ago, we put up $1 per town, you know, for a capita in each town. That money's still sitting.
Still sitting there.
So that if she runs out of money, we can still help people. And here's the point, the point is, there were communities neighboring us, and when we first went to them, said, we don't have a problem.
Right.
We don't have a problem, you should, I said, you just had a funeral. You just had an 18-year-old kid, you had a funeral. I understand. He died in Milford.
At least from your town.
Lives in your town next door. You don't have a problem, you should do.
I would, I'm going to send you the, my graph that I made because, Tom, you would...
No more graphs.
You would be, it would bring you...
She has a lot of graphs.
Because if you see, when we started in 2012, we tracked all of the overdoses, the deaths, and then we decided, we started tracking in like 2018, the alcohol use. So, we see this huge increase at like, you know, 80 overdoses, 10 deaths, and we're down to 26 overdoses this year with zero deaths. And it's unheard of in the state of Massachusetts.
More than 10.
More than, you know, it's unheard of though.
To your point, Chief, and we talk about this all the time, you say internationally, you know, Milford was chosen, and the reason, not only the good work that you do, but you and I talk about it all the time, there was, in my humble opinion, one word, compassion. This community is compassionate about everything we do. And this is an example, and then put together a program, to Amy's point, to watch those numbers fall the way they, as we were willing to stand up tall, and it was a lot of hard work, but in the end, it's paying off.
Well, we fought for grants, and you know, to give due to our district attorney, Joe Early, the largest grant ever, and Milford Regional, meaning to include those towns that put up the money for a capita, I mean, we wrote a grant, I worked on it, Amy worked on it, Joe Early's people did, and when all of a sudden, one of three grants nationally, Milford.
And now that grant ended, and we were able to sustain Christmas Corner.
$1.2 million.
You know?
Wow, that's fantastic.
And you know, people say, to your point, okay, someone lived in Oldville, you know, today, the Family Services Union worked with two people.
Absolutely.
Both longtime Milford residents, helped them with placement, helped making them whole, and you try to put a dollar...
You can't.
You can't, because I promise you, if we have to, you know, go hands-on with these people, and all these bad things happen, you don't have a checkbook big enough. Sorry, you don't.
No.
So, what have we done? We've not only increased the quality of life, helped these people, you know, to your point, live a prosperous life, something they can be proud of, okay? Make them whole, I mean, what, you know, everybody here in front of me has children, what's a child's life worth?
Yeah.
Priceless, priceless.
And I know, look at all of you, it's worth your own life.
Right.
Okay? Well, that's what we're doing here.
Yeah.
We're saving lives.
All right.
And we've done it in such a way that nobody else in the country has done it like us.
And like what Amy was mentioning before too, in this documentation and also to other boards, to get this also into the youth sports arena.
Yeah.
Yes.
Absolutely.
You know, you got their parents there and other, you know...
Absolutely.
Kids today like to experiment with things and whatnot, you never know what's going to happen, where it's going to happen, this doesn't happen on the side of the street.
Right. On the sidelines, I mean, anywhere.
Anywhere, anywhere.
Knowledge and precious, and that's, all right.
Well, again, thank you very much.
Fantastic.
Thank you, and keep up the good work.
Yeah.
I'll send you my graphs.
And to you, Amy, and the chief, just remember, we're with you.
Thank you. Do you want me to send?
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
See you, well, thank you.
Take care now.
See you now.
All right, next under scheduled appointments, again, is our police chief with his parking recommendations for the town of Milford. Chief?
Okay, parking, so this is obviously a hot topic, I don't know if everybody read the planning, was in the Milford Daily News, they talked about the group to do future planning for the town of Milford.
Oh, yeah.
It was number one in the list.
Yeah, yeah, parking and traffic.
Yeah. Number one in the list of traffic, yeah. So, I know we had a very, a very productive meeting, last meeting with a presentation, and I agree 100% that we need to take small bites at this because I can't see the outage of kicking that can down the road, and that's just going to cause problems here and there and move it over. So, what I drew up, you know, the town administrator, you know, working with me, him and I, other ones that feel the vast majority of these complaints, and believe it or not, the complaints are a good thing because it brings attention to certain issues that we might not think. So, what I have before you is a small bite of the bigger picture of the whole town, and I want to say that to everybody watching, we're going to get to the rest of the town. We have to do this slowly, and we can't impact people all over town and cause this upheaval. So, the other thing too that we're going to do is we're going to do an ad campaign. If we get these things approved, we're going to put out, you know, I'm going to direct officers, I'll come up with a flyer and a linklet, that instead of initially impacting these people with fines or towing the vehicle, we're going to kind of, for lack of a better word, give them the heads up, say, hey, this has been changed in the traffic rate, you need to be mindful of this, boom, 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 and then starting this day, we're going to conduct enforcement. The same thing we did on Municipal Arts, if you remember. I know the town administrator and I worked hard on that, but that's what we did. We did basically an awareness campaign, and then, you know, three weeks later, or every day going down there, then we started ticketing and tolls, and I think perception was pretty good, people understood it, so.
And Chief, that also helps too, when you do things on a gradual basis, that also helps you with more controlled enforcement.
Yes.
More controlled focus on what we have to do.
Yep.
And whatnot, and I think that's the way to do it.
So, before you, it's the things, I went through everything, and these are the things that we came up with, like I said, that small bite, is number one, increase the parking distance from the driveway corners to 10 feet, it's currently 5 feet. 5 feet isn't that much, I think 10 feet is reasonable from the corner of a driveway, I know that'll help people getting in and out of their driveway and pulling into their driveways. We already amended the traffic regs to parking opposite the driveway, which has been huge for us.
Right.
That's really made, I've probably as many complaints as I've got, I've gotten people calling saying, that was a great idea, thank you, it's worked out great in the neighborhood. Increase the distance from the corners of all intersections to 30 feet, from the corners of the intersection to 30 feet, it's now 20 feet. I think that's just, again, 10 feet, which will make it even better, pulling out of intersections, give you a better line of sight. And Grove Street, we spoke to a couple people about concerns on Grove Street, I know Mr. Wagnon came in, and he spoke very passionately about it. I actually went to Grove Street today, and you couldn't pull down the street. And as I was driving down Grove Street, checking the plates, everyone who belonged to a driveway that was empty.
And that was in the daytime, Chief?
It was during the day, today.
Right, because...
I think a lot of people were home because of the...
Because I remember when you showed us the slides, the main problems were at night.
Were at night.
Right.
Right. So, I know this is kind of a big bite of the apple, but we should change the entire length of Grove Street to odd-numbered side parking, no parking to tow zone. Obviously, this is going to be following a campaign of, for lack of a better word, advertising to what we're doing. And then, this was, Attorney Loughlin made this recommendation, and I think it's a great idea, painting certain intersections with no parking tow zone, I think that gives a heads up to people, and these are the biggest, I want to say, on the top of my list of the intersections. So, you know, West Bruce at Congress, South High at Water, and West Street at Union. Now, certainly, all intersections are going to be that 30 feet ticketing and tow zone, you know, when we get there. But I think these intersections, having it painted, I think that it's going to bring a lot more awareness and, you know, like, you know, Select Board member Mazza Kelly was saying, we need to start somewhere to see how this works. So, I would recommend doing those intersections, try to get them painted, and see how that works, and see if that can mitigate the problem there. Because I think, you know, to, Attorney Loughlin was saying, I think once you paint them, I don't think you have a problem. I think people see it, and they're not prepared.
Sure.
You know, a lot, a lot of stuff is out of sign, out of mind, and you just don't give it a second thought.
Sure.
So, I think this is a good place to start.
Thank you, Chief. Tom?
I totally agree, and I think that painting at least those particular areas, because you deal with a lot of parents, they want to sit right there on the corner, and even the school bus can't move. And then we do later, he knows some intersections where you're dealing with, you can't get a trash truck in, you can't get a trash truck in, you can't get a fire engine in. So, I think doing that, and then we take a look, is that operationally effective? If it is, then we look at other intersections. I applaud the chief coming back and taking this in bites. Let's look at, here are the intersections where I have the most problems, people sitting on the corners. Nevertheless, let's change the distance on corners, which means all we do in many of them, that it do have signs, we move it another 10 feet.
Right, correct.
No parking here to corner.
Right.
Okay, we move to 10 feet, we drill the new hole. Likewise, with dealing with the distance from driveways, you know, if you park right on top of someone's driveway, then shame on you, you know, that's being disrespectful. You're not being courteous either to your neighbors or to your friends' neighbors, it's disrespectful. You can't get in and out of a driveway with a line of sight of 5 feet on each side of vehicle, especially today with SUVs and other larger vehicles, and that's a fact. So, I have no problem with any of this. I applaud the chief for coming back, laying out a good plan to say, okay, let's do this, we'll evaluate it, and then we'll take another look at another street, and we'll go forward from there. So, I would make a motion that we approve Chief's recommendation.
Paul, comments?
Comment too, yes, like I said, Chief, thank you for that, and thank you for coming back with these, with this plan here. And like we mentioned before, on a gradual basis, we have more control... And like we mentioned before, on a gradual basis, we have more control over it, we'll be able to focus more on the fundamentals, and like any good administrator or manager would do if they see something that needs to be adjusted, will adjust it as we go along, as Tom was just mentioning as well. But I think it's a great step in the right direction for a better Milford, and for a better, livable Milford. And again, it's the first step, I want people to understand, it's not the only step. It's the first step of something that is a larger issue that we're gonna be addressing. And I thank you so much for that, and I second any of your motion.
All right. Chief, here's a couple of questions. First of all, thank you very much for this. I know the last meeting you came forward, and we asked you to come back, reevaluate what you've done. Thank you very much for that. One thing that you mentioned at the last meeting though, when you were in New York, maybe I misunderstood you, but I don't think I did, you were saying that they used to paint, like, in, in, say, a no-parkings or a crosswalk, they would actually paint into that basically instructions or?
Yeah. You know, in the city.
Don't block the box.
Don't block the box.
We have that at Haywood and East Main.
Yeah.
Okay.
They paint the lines, right? And so now that you paint the lines, and it's, it's, it's kind of comical, when I leave the police station, if I'm coming down, pull out and take a right, and it, it happens three times a week, there'll be cars blocking the blocks. And it's, and I'll put my window down, and I'll tell them to put their window on, they're like, hey, how you doing? They're like, how are you? I go, $105, block the blocks. And then, I didn't even realize it. You know what I'm saying? So to your point.
Heywood, Heywood and East Main.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if we put that in, you know, don't block the blocks and the painting, you know what I mean?
You have a sign too. Have it with a sign, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think it just kind of.
Well, the reason I ask the question is, and when you brought that up last meeting, I thought it was a great idea, but the reason I bring that up is, when we were looking at your presentation at the last meeting, on Water Street blatantly.
Yeah.
Somebody parked.
Yeah.
You know, they didn't stop and sit in a car, they blatantly parked a car in a, in a, in a crosswalk.
Yeah.
And like, you made a valid point, you opened your driver's door and get out, you don't realize you're in a crosswalk.
Yeah.
So, you know, anything we can do to enhance that.
I think it's education, like we said.
Enforcement.
We have to get aware, they have enforcement. You know, tickets are way, way up. You know, tickets that the men and women are writing to the police department. And again, you know, we, we talked about this before, you know, we don't wanna be overbearing.
Right.
Every dollar is sacred, and you don't wanna be overbearing, you don't wanna be unreasonable.
Right.
So we do the best we can, but tickets are way up. And, you know, we're pretty busy. Our call volume now is to the point that these calls that we're doing now are way more detailed and intricate than they used to be. You know, things from cyber crimes and child exploitation, and it pulls officers off the street. It's very time.
Right, right.
Well, and again, you know, to change the subject, but thank you for bringing that up, is one of the things that came up as well in the last meeting was, people will call in, and then they don't see an officer right away, or, and they say, well, what's the sense of calling in? And you made a valid call in.
Yeah.
We log the call, and when things quiet down, it's the supervisor's responsibility to go in and say, hey, let me have some of those calls that, and then they go out. It might not be right then and there, but it does get addressed.
And, and let's say, let's play the complete devil's advocate. Let's say it doesn't get addressed, right? You have a bunch of arrests at the hospital, you have a bunch of these things going on, you have all these problems, well, it still gets logged, there's a parking issue there.
Right, right.
So now, when, you know, myself and the other guys and stuff go to roll call, you say, hey, you know what? We got a bunch of complaints over here, make sure we get somebody to spend some time over there.
Right.
Get back, you know what I mean? Do you have an extra guy on today? You know what I mean? If somebody's extra, send them over to this section of town. So we track all that stuff.
Right.
Okay? Because I've had a couple people call, and they called back two hours later and said, well, they moved. Okay, well, it's still logged.
Right.
And it's important for us to have that data.
And if it's repetitious, you, it's programming.
Right.
As much as they program the park there, you program to come back and see them. So it's, it is, and he knows that you do. You, you pull up those areas, where am I seeing problems? Just as we've done with businesses and working with them. Where do you see issues? How do you work with them to get a better result?
Right.
And that's what we've done for years.
And, and the benefit at our last meeting too, was, which was surprising to me, I don't know about anybody else, but I never would ever think that Grove Street would be a cut-through.
Oh, yeah.
And Lieutenant Wagner brought it to our attention. And I should say, Chief Wagner, I'm sorry.
If you know not to drive depot, yeah, Grove is bad.
Yeah, it's a cut-through. I would never, you know, never think about, you and I had a conversation earlier though, and, you know, today being a rainy day, you couldn't get down Water Street.
Couldn't get down Water Street.
And we looked at your presentation the night and the day, and during the daytime, Water Street was, and today, you couldn't get down there because everybody was home.
Couldn't get down Grove Street today.
Yeah.
And, and I, you know, and I made note that all the driveways have.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And if I could say, anybody that's watching, if you wanna, if you wanna make it easy on us.
Parking, parking your driveway.
Parking your driveway. Get off the street and get in your driveway. That's, that's all you gotta do. So, and before I vote, I just, Tom and Maria, I'm not gonna make you wait till invitation to speak. Would you like to say a few words, or you're all set?
I'm all set.
You're all set?
Maria?
Yes.
Would you like to say? I won't make you wait till invitation to speak, if you wanna come up.
Because we're talking the same subject.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be on the side then, Chief.
Sit wherever you want.
State your name, Maria, please.
Maria Valencia.
Sure.
I'm here because I wanted to see if there's any change of the complaints I did. And I sent an email to Richard, I sent it to Brian, and they told me they're gonna send it with the rear view.
Does it have to do with parking, Maria?
Yeah, the, the.
No, it's not the parking.
The intersection.
The intersection.
It's the intersection.
Spring and.
Spring Street, it comes down to Spring Street, right in the corner of my backyard, they turn to Court Street, coming down from Spring Street, right in the corner to Court Street. On top of there, we have both sides on Court Street, here and there. And I see people coming down to Spring Street to the end, and I see people going up because that's confusing people, the way the signs are. I don't know who designed it, I don't know who went there where it's horrible. And, and the newspapers I read, they're gonna, will go to Jefferson Street and park just one side. What they did, they throw more traffic to Jefferson Street, and they never did nothing. The accidents, it happens down to Jefferson Street, not in Spring Street. Because a lady died about a month, a year and a half, the accident was at the end of Jefferson Street. About a month and a half, maybe two months, was another accident there. And at the end, there's with a bus stop, the per capita kids, twice, it skates in there in everything. Our street, it's overcrowded. I recorded, and accidentally, I get rid of it. But I can't do it again. I was there at 7:00 in the morning, and I didn't stop my, my recording, because I wanted to see. Unfortunately, I erased it without, you know, and that was the reason I'm here.
So Maria, are you talking about Court Street or Jefferson?
I think, I think you have it in your.
Or Court and Spring.
In your email.
Okay.
We changed it so that people know.
See it, because.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah.
We changed it so people don't come out to the senior center.
Correct.
There's the curve on North Bow.
Correct, correct, yeah.
You, you don't have the vision for Spring.
Absolutely.
That was the issue.
And what they're doing too, is they're using Jefferson Street more now.
They have to.
Right, they have to.
But Jefferson can handle it.
The curve, Chief, it's not Chief, Tom.
Oh, you, you, Chief, listen.
Say, it's not a bad curve.
Yeah.
It's not a bad curve. You're gonna go there, you're seeing with your own eyes.
Yeah.
We have worse curves on Jefferson Street than they have the one in there. And on top of there, before, they even have a stop sign at the end of the street to say, stop.
Yeah.
Okay? I, I believe it's still the same. And now, everything goes to Court Street, to Jefferson Street. It's crazy. Especially with the kids, especially with the bus stopping there. When senior center ever they trip, they park all the way up in Jefferson Street. And I would like to ask why they said they're gonna have one-way park, and for a, for a better street, end up to be worse, end up to get Spring Street down, Spring Street up, Court Street, everything goes to Jefferson Street. And it's just my house, it's about 60 feet, maybe more or less. It's just there, and it's kids there too. They complain, and I have neighbors, which they complain, and I said, I'm gonna go there by myself, I'm gonna see what they're gonna do. If we have to get attention, or if we get together and go there, maybe they'll pay more attention, just to be myself here. Because if they, if you don't wanna do better, better, leave it the way it was. Because the problems, it's at Jefferson Street, not on Spring Street. Go there, take a look time. And we also have curves, curves on, on Jefferson Street, it's a lot of worsted one they have over there near there. And the, and I really appreciate it, either you do something about it, or just put it the way it was. Even with the way it was, it was a lot of traffic on Spring, on Jefferson Street.
Okay, we'll take it, we'll take it under advisement.
I don't know if you have a chance to see it on your email?
Yeah, we'll see it. Yeah, we'll take it under advisement, absolutely. Take, you know, we appreciate you taking the time to come in.
Do it for yourselves.
Yeah.
You know?
But this was a move that was made, Chief, what are your thoughts?
I, I understand what she's saying. I don't, you know, I mean, if she, you know, will certainly go back and look at the signage, make it more visible, or bigger, or there, sure, that's, that's reasonable. But as far as, and I, and I know, you know, Chief Loughlin agreed with me, that, and I didn't see it, I didn't see it before the complaint was made by the senior center, Maria, I didn't give it a second thought. I didn't give it a second thought until I drove it a bunch of times, and I had other people drive it, pulling out Spring Street onto North Bow Street.
You know, it's, it's a problem.
It is.
It's a bad corner. You don't have it.
Yeah. It's very serious.
And we even thought about swapping it around completely, coming up the other way. But you can't, because you don't have the line of sight on Main.
On Main Street.
I mean, you know, we have a, you know, incorporated 1780. There's parts of the country that didn't exist in 1780. You know what I mean? There, nobody living there. And it's old roads, and we're trying to mitigate it, but we'll take a look at it, we'll go back and take a look at it.
All the.
And the sign is.
Yeah, the sign, Chief. Not the signs, I wanted to see if you avoid the, the traffic on Court Street to go into Jefferson Street. Because it's only my house there, that's where I got everything.
Yeah, I don't see how you're gonna.
And I don't, I don't see it why they don't do it the way it was. We could have put a sign there, slow down.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
Or, or put a stop sign there.
Okay, well, Maria.
You can't do a stop sign, Maria, on the curve, on North Bow.
No, no, on Spring Street, I'm saying on.
The dangerous point is the curve on North Bow. People coming from here, going down North Bow, if I'm coming out of Spring Street, I don't, if they're even traveling at 30 miles an hour.
Correct.
They don't have the stopping distance once they see me pulling out. We know that from experience. That's where the car got hit and right into the senior center. Now, we, we know that, we do know that. And, and the question comes is, you know, as far as Jefferson goes, can it handle the traffic? I'd, I'd be willing to, Chief, to do a traffic count on Spring Street coming from Main Street, and I, I'm gonna, from my experience, I believe it can. It, the, the issue really comes down to is, at the end of Spring Street, that curve here on North Bow.
I know the curve.
It's blind. It's dangerous.
I know it very well.
Right, very.
If you go on Jefferson Street, number four.
But danger, no, Jefferson Street, now you have a straightaway, I've turned, I've come to Spring Street, I have a line of sight, I have a line of distance, even school buses, they have lights and whatnot, but even without them, I have enough distance to stop. I have enough distance, someone coming out of Jefferson, that I see them coming out, you, it's hard here at Spring Street. It's very difficult.
Very.
Let alone for the average person. But now we're talking about senior citizens, you know, that are going, and I'm on, you know, the senior center, you know, it's just, the acuity isn't the same. And it's a problem. I say to you.
A problem.
You know, I say to you as a friend, that curve is difficult. And I don't, I don't want someone to get hurt.
Sit this down.
If I can simply send someone another 40 yards to go over to the next street and come out safely.
Put a sign a little farther away, because the street have been there as old as the town.
No problem.
Never were changes, and tell somebody now, decide to do it.
Yeah.
And not only for, for, for those, but cars going up from the end of the, the Spring, Spring Street all the way up, and I can't bring, see, I shouldn't take a picture.
You don't have to. But Maria, what we have to.
They don't have.
Maria, they go up one-way streets everywhere. You know, it doesn't mean it's right, it doesn't mean it's legal.
But Maria, well, we've, we've, we hear you, we hear you. We'll have the chief just take a look at it and get back to us, Tom.
I just, I just wanna make sure that we raised how we, how we ended up, came to that. Do I think the signage is the best signage? No. It can be very, very confusing, and, okay. okay.
It's not the best idea. Like, but we're trying to work.
But you're trying to work for safety.
I was surprised, to be honest with you. I was really, really surprised the way they did, they did the work there.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's take a peek at it.
On, on, on Court Street, it's both ways, right? If I park the car in a side of my street, and then they, they have no space to ride or to come.
Okay. Well, we're gonna take it under advisement. We'll have the chief look into and get back to us, okay?
I'm waiting for the chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maria.
And we have a motion, we have a second, and I would make that unanimous as far as the chief's recommendations for parking.
Parking. Thanks. Very nice to see you, Maria.
It was nice to you.
You, you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, dear. Thanks, thanks, chief. Yeah, yeah. Take a peek at that, will you? Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Apologize. Public hearing, I forgot. Is there anybody on at the public hearing? Was, there was nobody on and nobody here. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, our next agenda item is town administrator's report?
Yes, just one, one item. It's an update. Again, on the municipal aggregation plan, I want to confirm that the plan will launch in December. Within the next week, you should be receiving an official letter, all residents, with details explaining the three products available that we went over at last meeting and how to participate. We also have, will be hosting a community meeting in this room, Room 3, at Town Hall on Monday, October 28th at 7:00 PM, and virtually through Google Meet. For virtual access links and program details, you can visit milfordcommunityelectricity.com. So the program was here. It will be in effect. It should be in effect for the next winter season.
Beautiful.
Cold, cold weather season. So I think that's good news, and I just want to update the board on that.
Thank you.
That's all I have tonight.
Anybody have any comments, Rick?
That's all I have.
That was, that was great news. Very good, Rick. And then, and it was, it was pretty, pretty quick.
It was quicker than they anticipated.
Quicker than they anticipated.
Now, maybe they were just being a little.
Well, the, the DPU was on.
Ushus in their approach, but even they were somewhat surprised.
Right.
Our good energy, our consultants.
Excellent.
As always, thank you very much, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay, next agenda item is old business. Again, we turn to the town administrator.
Yeah, the warrant's there. I mean, you already approved the articles going forward. There are 30 total articles. There are a few select board articles. But again, it's there. There's no requirement that you vote on any or all of the articles. Obviously, as Paul, I think, said earlier, town meeting's the final arbiter here. So, but it's there for you, should you do anything with it.
And I will get with you, Rick, on the assignment of the select board.
Yes, I'll be putting that together, if not the end of this week, next week.
Okay. We had already approved.
You did, yes. Yep, you did. Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is new business. We do have a new business we have at Department of Veterans Services, a permit to obstruct for the Veterans Day Parade.
Yes.
Which is submitted by Mr. John Pillar from the Department of Veterans Services. As tradition has it, it will start at Veterans Memorial Drive at 9:30 AM, and the parade will start at 10:00 AM. Proceed up East Main Street to Calzone Park for a brief ceremony. Continue, the parade will continue up Main Street to Draper War Memorial Park. So again, the assembly, people assembling on Memorial Drive, Veterans Memorial Drive, will start at 9:30. The parade steps off at 10:00 AM. And again, it is a permit to obstruct application for the Veterans Memorial Parade. May I have a motion?
Before I do that, Ms., they, they don't pay the fee, do they? No, I don't.
No, no.
We don't require a fee from them.
I just saw, you know, what the, the fees were. So I apologize. To make sure. I make